All right, well, let's get started with the questions. We're going to start in seat E, and we're going to start with Matthew. But Siobhan, why don't you lead off with our first question of the night?
I think this is a good question, since you've all been listening to each other, and this is your second time today, listening to each other. Besides yourself, who on this forum, if you were a school board, all of you elected, who would you elect to be school board president? And why? Out of the six of you? Who would you elect to be? Having heard everyone spiel like Diane Nicolette said, who do you think would, you know, besides yourself, of course, be most qualified to be the school board president?
Yeah, pick me, pick me, right? You know, that's a really, really good question. I mean, look at all these beautiful faces. Everyone here has a heart for our kids. Everyone here has a heart for the future of our kids, you know? And this is the most important thing. Now, being born and raised here in Reno, loving the Silver State, and just looking after our kids has been something that has been a goal of mine. You know, when I hear children's voices, you know, it's just something that gives you goosebumps. So, you know, everyone on this, I'll tell you that everyone here on this meeting here cares about the kids.
You gotta pick one.
Diane, you know what? I think Diane is somebody that has depth of knowledge when it comes to some of the things she's studied in education. I think she understands some of the, if she was to mix and listen to each one of the people on this panel right now, I think she would be able to articulate what each person would. But that would be my pick.
Great, thank you, Matthew. Angie, you're up next.
Oh, you're on mute.
I think you're on mute.
Still mute.
All right, I was waiting for it to come up. All right, it's my first time ever on mute, I'm kidding. I was gonna try to get out of it, but I heard Siobhan say, "You gotta answer," being the reporter.
Because you know, you often have to work with people you don't get along with on the school board. So, if you had to vote for one of your colleagues after, you're probably more better prepared to answer this question than a lot of voters, because you've listened to each other so much. Who would you pick?
Well, let me say this, I am gonna pick, but I would, I honestly don't think I would not get along with any other people on the panel, frankly. Not just because we've got a little bit of a chance to be around each other, but I'm gonna agree with Matthew, and people have a heart to serve and a heart for the children. And I think where you come from is really, really important. And as long as you're looking, we may get there different ways, and that's part of the fantastic thing about having different minds stay together on the board. That's a part of diversity. In terms of who I would pick, I would actually have to, believe it or not, I'd have to go with Diane Nicolette, and here's my reasoning. One, she has a strong education background, and I think that's important. I think that anybody on this, anybody that I'm looking at can be a good board member, right? I certainly agree with that, I believe that wholeheartedly. You know, Diane's been on the board before, and I think that's helpful. She was on the board because she was appointed. And it's as much as everybody on this panel has something to add, right? There's also, it's a fire hydrant when you first start, a lot coming at you at once. And she'd have a little bit less of an overwhelming impact, because she's been there before.
Great, thank you, Angie. Diane, you, believe it or not, are up next, so gotta pick somebody else. Oh, I think you're on mute as well.
I'm just kidding, I'm pretending.
He was doing that on purpose.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
Well played.
I'm gonna say, I usually say fabulous question, and I'm gonna say, "I don't like this question."
You're right.
But I'm gonna answer it.
Sorry.
That's all right, I am gonna answer it, because it's an interesting question. I'm gonna do this. Being the president of the board is a really thankless job, except for maybe the six people and the superintendent. It is a very tough job. People don't realize that after the meeting is over, some of those 10-hour meetings, you get to either stay or come back and get to vet things that happen for accuracy, for clarity, for relevance, and it's a very tough job. So, I think anybody here could do it. I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna cheat. I would pick Church, because he is a watchdog. Man, would he, who, he would make things very interesting. Angie, because she's done it, and she could be effective and efficient, and she, wow, background. Matthew has a huge heart, and I think he's a very good listener. Craig has been a leader, and he's been in a different venue of leading. And so, Siobhan, we've known each other for quite a few years, and I'm just gonna say, "I'm not gonna pick one person."
You have to vote, you have to vote. What'd you pick? Your first choice, maybe? You went with Church. How would you answer first, is your number one answer?
All right, all right.
Seems reasonable.
Okay, next, who's next?
Okay, Craig, let's hear what you have to say.
I agree with Diane, it is a really tough question, and to pick out of this group. And as Diane said, you know, we've been around each other for a while, and we've got to know each other quite a bit, and I think they're all a great group of people. If I had to pick one, I guess I'd have to go with Angie. She's got the experience, she's been on the board. It would be, she could be a great mentor to the other two board members. So, that would be the pick that I would make.
Okay, thanks. Let's move on to Jeff.
Yes, Lieutenant Colonel Craig Westner, final answer. And that's because it's about leadership. The board does not teach. I appreciate the teaching backgrounds, but the board leads. We manage a billion-dollar budget. I want to say that both Angie Taylor and Ms. Nicolette are wonderful people, can't say enough good things. But here's what it comes down to. They have served on the board, and Mr. Westner, Matt, and myself have not. So, really, the voters, I mean, I gave my opinion, but the voters need to decide, do they like what's going on in the school district and want to continue? Or do they want some fresh blood to maybe take it in a new direction? Colonel Westner is a leader in the guard and in the community. And so, you know, everybody, you got, again, some wonderful choices, but that's my final answer.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Scott, you're up.
Well, thank you. You know, my initial thought was to have a four-way tie with Mr. Montanese, Ms. Nicolette, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Westner, because each of them brings a lot of really good things to the table, you know, experience and a good heart and leadership examples. And so, but I hear now that we have to, I have to pick somebody. And so, if I were to choose just one of those four, I think I would go with Angie Taylor. You know, I've had a chance to serve with her for a number of years, including one year when she was the president. And I was very impressed with how she managed the school board, especially the meetings, how she was a good advocate, a good spokeswoman for the school district. And after this election, you know, there's potentially gonna be four brand-new trustees, or maybe one or two come back. So, you're gonna have some new personalities in the mix. And I think someone that has that experience of being president before would do a pretty good job of kind of getting all these different personalities working together towards common goals and common visions. So, I think that her experience raises her just above those other three. But I think that all four of them have tremendous things that they can bring to the school district and to the school board, and I'd be happy to serve with any of them.
Great, thank you, Scott. Okay, next question, we're gonna start with Craig, so he gets to lead off for us.
First?
You're first now, since you felt bad, you're never first. What do you think's the hardest part, right now, of being a Washoe County School District parent?
Probably not knowing whether a school's gonna be held the next day in person or by remote. Distance learning, I think that's the consistency there, it's just tough. And, you know, I don't know if there's a really good answer, given the situation we're in, between smoke from fires and ventilation and COVID and everything else. But I've had a few parents, some of my employees or parents have come and talked to me, because they know I'm running for the school board, and they said, "Hey, can you do something about figuring out whether or not I gotta take my kid to school, or are they gonna stay home for distance learning today?" Because the other day, I was halfway to the school, and I got heard on the radio at school. You know, that's a tough thing. I'm sure that there's a lot of stress in people's minds about, you know, the potential for contamin, or potential for disease spread. I also know that there's a lot of parents who are really concerned about their kids are in sports, not being able to play sports. Those were the top three things.
Great, thank you, Craig. Diane, let's go to you next.
Well, I am gonna follow the rule this time and pick one, just one. Being the new faculty member for parents is very, very challenging. Even if you have a background in education, being your child's teacher at home for the Washoe County School District Academic Program, that is tough. And if you don't have the proper technology, devices, connectivity, and you're not a teacher, and you're not familiar with, you know, how do you implement a curriculum? That is very, very difficult. You add that with balancing work and other responsibilities you have, that is a really tough job. So, being the newest faculty member and really worrying about, "Am I giving my child what they're gonna need? Are they going to be behind, or are they going to be just fine?"
Thank you, Diane. Angie Taylor, I would love to hear from you next.
I thought I would unmute my mic this time. I would think that the most difficult part is distance learning as a whole. I've had the chance to talk to, for some of the things that have already been mentioned. On the one hand, if you're fortunate enough to be able to stay at home, or if you made the difficult decision in your family to not work and stay at home, then that in and of itself could cause some extra stress. You do have to be the teacher now, and you're the lunch lady, and you're the school nurse, and you're the custodian, and you're the PE teacher, and you're all of those things. That's definitely difficult. In addition, if you are home, or if you have to go to work, and your children don't have what they need so that they can adequately and appropriately participate in the educational process as it is right now, or if you don't have the devices at home, maybe you have a device, you don't have the connectivity at home. Maybe you and all your kids at home, and you don't have enough bandwidth in your Wi-Fi. So, I think distance learning as a whole, because it has so many challenges, it touches so many people, and every end of the spectrum would be the most difficult part.
Great, thank you, Angie. Matthew, let's go to you. Who? Hang on, I'm sorry. No. Okay, I think we've lost Matthew at least temporarily.
Okay, I think I'm, am I good now? Can you hear me?
Oh, no, yeah, you're back, all right.
All right, yeah, sorry about the delay. All right, yeah, you know, there's a couple of things. I've heard from some parents, you know, including myself, I'm a parent as well, by the way, and my wife. So, we have one child that's doing full-distance learning, because we just can't, we can't expect her not to hug on her friends, you know, and so, that's the reason. Then we've got one who's 17 years old, and she's got a 4.0. She's doing great, headed to college, and she's on the hybrid blend, you know, depending on smoke. Now, it's kind of tough to get to school sometimes, so it's difficult. What I'm hearing from parents is, beginning with the technology, the platform itself, there was a couple of tutorials that were there that would explain kind of how the platforms would work. But some of the children, some of the students really had a difficult time knowing how to transcrack their work over to Dropbox or getting email started. So, a lot of the teachers, a lot of educators became the IT person for the kids. You know, and then, of course, some of the devices were also, I'll stop there, thank you.
No, no, thank you, I appreciate it. Scott Kelly. Scott, are you with us? Okay, well, while we're waiting for Scott, Jeff, do you wanna step in and take this?
Absolutely. Number one, this is where the Reno Gazette and the fact-checkers come in, but I'm gonna ask people to Google it too. I mean, anybody can go online and look this up. I get phone calls and emails almost faster than I can answer them from concerned parents, but I want to look to the future. COVID is gonna come and go. It's the future, the long term. The quality of education is what I'm hearing. And that's where, again, the fact-checkers come in. But we have to make some plans, and I have ideas, and I'd love to talk to them. I just can't do that in a minute. But we have to improve the quality of education. It's failing, you know, I'm sorry if I disagree with others, but it's failing, and we have to do better. I'm also hearing from some alert people that realize we are facing a fiscal tsunami of unprecedented proportions. I mean, the cuts are major. I mean, this is big, 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 including the $20 million incline cut. Enrollment is down, and we're taking a $12 to $15 million cut on that. If enrollment's down, why are we building? And zoning, I'm hearing zoning for many, many teachers, or many, many parents. So, and I have some ideas I'd like to experiment with on zoning to make the parents happy. If the parents aren't happy, the kids aren't happy, the teachers aren't happy, we gotta make the parents happy, and we've gotta fix the zoning issue. So, the final answer would be quality of education, and I hope people research it and show me right or wrong. Thank you.
Great, thanks a lot, Jeff. Scott, do we have you back?
I believe so, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you, thank you. Okay, same question for you.
Okay. Yeah, so, and I heard what some of the others had spoken about. So, yeah, as a parent of a fifth grader, but then also having spoken to many, many parents, it seems like the hardest part is just that uncertainty of what the next day is gonna bring. And there's a feeling of helplessness, because whether it's smoke, whether it's COVID-19, or later on this year, when it's snow days, you know, these are all things that are out of people's hands. They can't control the weather, they can't control COVID very much. And yet, those are the things that potentially could impact how the next day looks. And I look at just my experience today. I mean, went to bed last night thinking that I was gonna take my oldest son to school, and then dropped my little one off to daycare, and then off to work I go, but saw the email and got the voice message early this morning saying that schools have been, will be closed down because of smoke. So, I had to quickly rearrange my schedule. I brought my oldest son with me to work so that he could do distance learning. And as I'm working, and as I'm trying to balance the debate earlier today, and then helping him with his education distance-wise, it was a struggle. And I do know that a lot of parents have felt, they've had some struggles with Microsoft Teams, with it being kind of complicated, with Dropbox and emails not always working or syncing well. And so, I think that this distance learning point is gonna be something that people have to really keep working on, because it's a challenge for a lot of people. But yeah, just that uncertainty of what the next day brings, it does add a little bit of stress to a lot of parents and families out there.
Great, thank you, Scott. Okay, moving on to the next question. I think we're gonna start this time, shoot, let's start with Angie this time around.
This is just gonna be a simple one, it can just be, you know, a sentence. What's one book you think every graduate of Washoe County School District High School should have read before they leave high school?
The Total Money Makeover.
Okay.
You said just one thing, right?
Yep, yep.
Oh, sure, unless you have a reason to elaborate on.
You don't have to take the full minute, that's perfect.
No, 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 I thought that's all you wanted, you have to elaborate. And that's, because that's something that's really tangible, that whether you're going on to college or a career or the military, learning to manage your money makes a really big difference. It also really helps you to not stress about it as much, because you have a plan. You tell your money where to go, or you'll wonder where it went, right? So, I had to choose between that and the book, anyway, it didn't matter. But that's what I would say, the Total Money Makeover, because every student could use it and benefit from it. Plus, the state law to give financial education now.
Great, thank you, Angie. Matthew? Oh, I think you're on mute again.
I am no longer muted, correct?
All right, yeah.
All right, you're correct, beautiful. So, I'm reading two books myself right now. One is Extreme Ownership, and I believe that this is a huge thing for all students, is to kind of own who they are and own what they're doing. Another book, real quick, is by Robert Greenleaf, it's Servant Leadership. I believe that learning how to serve others and understanding discipline allows you to be free. It really, it allows freedom. The more disciplined you are, the more free you will be. Those are my two. I know it was supposed to be one.
Great, thank you. Let's go to Craig, what do you have?
Well, Matthew took servant leadership, I think I turned him on to it, so I can't take that. But one that may sound unusual, but Seven Habits of Highly Successful People by Stephen Cuddy. That teaches you how to communicate well, how to understand, and then seek to be understood, and how to work with people. And I think that is something we need tremendously in this country.
Thank you, Craig. Diane?
Well, let me see here. Turn Your Ship Around. It's about intent-based leadership. And whether you are gonna read it for your own, because you're gonna lead your own life, or whether you're going to lead an organization as big as Amazon, knowing your own leadership skills and how to work with others so you can make great things happen, and knowing you make a mistake and how to turn your ship around is really important as we grow up.
Great, thank you. Scott Kelly?
Well, if I had to pick one book, and it's a very powerful book for me, for a lot of people, I think it would be Night by Ellie Weasel. And it's an autobiography, it's about Ellie Weasel trying to keep his father alive when they were at Auschwitz during the final year or two of World War II. And it's just, it's a heartbreaking book, because he, and it's a small book, I think, just over 100 pages. But he describes, you know, humanity at its worst, and he's trying to keep himself alive, his father alive. And it's just very, very powerful. And I, but I think that a lot of students that would read it would see that, even though he went through this horrific experience, after the war, he rebuilt his life, he found purpose. He ended up winning a Nobel Peace Prize. And so, he was able to take just this horrible experience and turn it into something positive for humanity. So, I think that would be the one book that I would hope most, most if not all of our students read at some point during their public education career.
Great, thank you, Scott. Jeff Church?
Well, a couple. I'm gonna narrow it down to two, and then narrow it down to one. My father gave me a copy of The Armed Forces Officer when I was a teenager. This is my own copy when I got my commission in the Air Force. It talks about leadership, it talks about followership. You can't have leadership without followership. There's a time to lead, a time to follow. It talks about being part of something bigger than yourself. Talks about duty, honor, country. Those are things my father took seriously, Lieutenant Colonel Sheldon Church, something I take seriously. The second book, real simple, Animal Farm, not Animal House, Animal Farm. Very easy reading, it talks about government. It talks, it's so true today as it was when it was written. It talks about all animals are created equal, but some animals are more equal than others, which is part of my motivation for getting on the school board and being so involved in the community, is we need just somebody to represent the taxpayer, somebody to represent the common person, and not the special interests. So, final answer, Animal Farm, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hey, since I got to go first, and I had another book, I'll go ahead and squeeze it in real quick. The Gift of Imperfection, Dr. Brené Brown. It talks about you and not having, not expecting yourself to be perfect. It's a gift to be imperfect and not be shamed and to feel okay with it. And I think we have to start on the inside, in addition to dealing with the outside. So, I had to squeeze that in, Brett.
Great, thank you, Angie. Okay, we're gonna lead off with, I don't think Diane's had a chance to lead off. We're gonna lead off with Diane, this next question, go ahead, Siobhan.
We've heard over and over again at school board meetings, teachers really being upset. How are you gonna improve morale for teachers in the district?
Well, being one of seven trustees, I won't be doing it by myself. But the first thing you have to do is you have to listen, and then you have to ask so you can have clarity and understanding. You know, right now, there are a lot of reasons to be scared, upset, mad, worried. And so, in order to really help people get what they want so that they can feel comfortable and they can feel skillful and ready to do what they need to do, you have to really understand what they want. And you have to help others understand the impact of getting what you want. And so often, my gosh, it's just a fact, so often, so many things we want to do to help each other, they cost time, they cost resources, and so, we have to figure out how to do that. We have to figure out what's really important, what is the most important thing to do to help.
Great, thank you, Diane. Craig, you're up next.
Now, I wish I had more than a minute. The, my company was awarded the best place to work by the Northern Nevada Human Resources Association, Northern Matt, last year, third this year. It's about creating a great culture. We gotta create a culture that respects and honors and allows teachers to be a teacher, make decisions, and have some autonomy. Which starts out by starting out with a, developing a, or conducting a climate culture survey. And then, take those results and start working with them, and set a goal, what you want to achieve for engagement. I only have a minute, but it's a big topic I would love to talk for a very, very long time about.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Matthew?
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So, there's quite a few things that I know educators are concerned about. One, one thing I'd like to do, well, many things I would like to do with the help of the rest of the board, of course, is to remove any inequitable burdens. Teachers are working 10- to 12-hour days right now, and it's crazy. And we've got, we're letting go, we're letting go our substitute teachers, and this is, this just cannot happen. I'm very passionate about making sure we have the surplus and the resources available for our teachers to make sure they don't get burnt out. They wanted to be teachers when they grew up, and if they're fit to be an educator, and we're not allowing them to do that, as much as they need to be able to do that, being creative and teaching from the heart, we're just in a deficit. You know, there were some ad hoc standards. When COVID came out, some of the educators wanted plexiglass shields, and, you know, by the end of the, you know, when we actually started getting back to school, many of the teachers didn't have those, and they wanted them. So, I want to know why we weren't able to produce what the teachers needed. The last thing that feels really important is, is we need to take the burdens away from the teachers with regards to abuse from student to student and student to teacher. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Angie?
Thank you, Brett. I think a lot of good things have been said, and some of those things are occurring, but it doesn't mean that they can't be better. I think a really important part of morale is absolutely culture. Values plus behavior equals culture. So, part of it is, when the new strategic plan is being developed, which is supposed to happen this year, but it will be next year, is everybody gets a chance to weigh in on that. You give people a voice, you give them some buy, because that creates some buy-in when you establish, "These are the values that we want to have as an organization." And then you look at, what do those values look like? What is that behavior we're going to reward? And what is that behavior that works against those values? And that's how you begin to create the culture. And as you begin to do that, if teachers are a part of creating that culture, you reward the great behavior in the culture. You fight back the old culture that wants to resist, then that's how you begin to have a change. But it's really important for teachers to become a part, more of a part of the solution, which I think can happen as we take the climate study that's being done, make sure it's being looked at with an employee lens as well, and then have them, "Let's get involved and work together," and how to plan together around those.
Thanks, Angie. Jeff Church?
All right, I hope I can squeeze this into one minute. First of all, I taught recruiting nationwide, recruiting and retention, taught through a company known as Diversity Recruiting Specialists, as well as the Performance Institute. So, that's my background. Last meeting, the school board cut 19 more teacher positions from the budget. 19 more teacher positions. Unacceptable. I was there, and I said, we need to cut the bloated administration. We need to cut their pay 15% so we can hire more teachers. I also said, there is a way we can adapt WC1 to allow the board to use the money as needed, not just for building, because again, enrollment is down. They said I was wrong. Reno Gazette fact checker, get ahold of me. I'll prove that I'm right. We can hire more teachers. That'll reduce class size. Also, we have to support teachers in the classroom with discipline. If somebody's acting out, the principal, assistant principals need to support them. That's big, big, big. And finally, using WC1 money, I have an idea where we can provide teacher housing. It's outrageous here, housing, and teachers that move here need temporary housing while they get their feet on the ground and see if they're a good fit. They don't want to be locked into a year lease if they can find one. So I have a plan to use that WC1 money for teacher housing and staff housing, bus drivers, STEM, special ed, the teachers that we really need, even those teachers that are already on board that might need a temporary housing or even long-term housing. That's good with me. We'll give it to them. And WC1 money is available. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
May I respond, although he didn't refer to me specifically. He did say the school board. And since I'm the only one on here on the school board, does that allow me to respond?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Give me a rebuttal, just like Trump.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you very much. I want to give an update. The budget was cut over $12 million because of the decrease in enrollment, which primarily came from kindergarten students. We were, that equaled, after cutting everything else that we could, that equaled 191 teaching positions. The budget staff got it down to 19. Those people were not cut. They had opportunities and were moved into other positions. So I want to make it very, very clear. 19 teachers did not lose their jobs. We had over $12 million to make up, and the budget team did a fantastic job because it kind of meant 191 positions.
Jeff?
The fact is, they cut 19 positions. We have not hired a new teacher in years. That's a fact. Again, do the fact checking. We've only hired replacements when somebody leave. Class size has gone up as enrollment went up slightly, and now enrollment's down, but they still cut the 19 teacher positions, and we still have classroom overcrowding. You know, we have new classrooms, but we don't have any teachers to put in them. And I thought Angie was going to call me out on WC1, but since she didn't, I guess I won't respond to that. But everything else I stand by. Thank you.
I have to have a chance to respond, am I right?
Absolutely. And then let's move on.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, the fact of the matter is, as long as we are number 46 in the country in funding, which is well over 190-something million dollars, is going to be, is going to be difficult to increase positions. I want to clarify something. We have cut over $51 million from the budget in the last four years. None of those cuts have been teacher positions. They have, in fact, been administrative positions and other things that are far away from the classroom. So I think there's always more to it. And I didn't respond to WC1 because right now, that's just simply illegal.
Okay, we're going to have to move on because...
She just said WC1 was illegal. I want to respond. She threw that in at the last minute.
I'm terribly sorry. We still haven't had a chance to hear from Scott on this question. I'm sorry. Scott, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I know that teachers are being burned out, and, you know, some of that's from unfunded mandates from the legislature. Some of that is just paperwork and administrative costs. I voted against the 2017, 2018 budget because it increased classroom sizes. That was another thing that I felt increasing classroom sizes would burn out our teachers. So I think teachers are very keen on what can the school board do to reduce the stress that they have to do and all this other paperwork and stuff they have to do so that they can just focus on their students and on teaching and on grading their tests and getting them through successfully to the next grade level. I think another thing, of course, is salary and benefits. You know, teachers, they love their students, but teaching is their, it's their career. They have to have a decent salary, a decent benefit. I voted for the 2019, 2020 school board, school district budget because it included a 3% raise for our teachers. And I think that that's a great start. I would love to continue to increase, not just for teachers, but for all of our staff. But as Ms. Taylor mentioned, you know, we are near last in the nation when it comes to funding. Until we can get that worked out with the legislature, our salaries are not where they need to be for our teachers. And then lastly, it's just listening. Listening to teachers, of course, at the school board meetings is good, but teachers want you to come onto their home turf. They want to visit their schools. They want you to go into their classrooms so they can show you the good stuff that's happening, but they can also show what's struggling, what their struggles are. Because of the school board, there are things that we can do to help them out. So you do all those different things, and I think that really helps with morale for teachers. And our staff morale as a whole is something that I've been very passionate about over the years because I know there's still a lot of room for improvement in increasing our staff morale.
Great, thank you, Scott. I think we have time for about one more question. I still want to leave time for everyone's closing statements. So let's wrap it up with one more question, Jevon.
I'm going to let each of you ask a question of your opponent.
Okay, well...
You can ask any question of your opponent.
Let's get started. Diane, do you have a question for Craig to get things started?
We spent so much time zooming that I feel, let me see here. So, Craig, if you are not honored with being able to sit at the trustee seat and you are then retired, what are you going to do? How are you going to, how are you going to stay involved with Washoe County School District?
That's a good question. You're on mute, though.
That's a really good question. At first, I thought that my answer would be I'd probably just go fishing more and skiing more. But I do care about education, and I would probably serve on a committee. Diane, you know, if there's a committee opening, I'd be happy to serve on a committee opening. That's probably the best answer I could give.
It's good. Now, whichever one of you wins puts the other one on a committee, right?
Clearly. Okay, Craig, why don't you launch one back?
You know, Diane, why don't I ask you the same question? I mean, you and I talked, and we know each other, and, you know, I respect you, and I think you'd be... Like I told you earlier, I think either one of us wins, the school board will be well-served. Same question.
I will agree. I will tell you that I really want to serve, so don't get me wrong on this. But I have, I'm very comfortable. If I don't get to serve, I'm very comfortable with you serving, and I mean that sincerely. What I will do is continue to serve on safe and healthy schools and continue to serve on career and tech ed. And I'm starting an LLC, Early Education Professionals. And so you may, you as trustees, may want to hire me to do something that I'll be able to help you with.
So you'd be a resource. Excellent.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you both. Jeff Church, do you have a question for Scott Kelly?
I do, and it's a tough question because there's a thousand-pound elephant in the room. Anybody that reads the Reno Gazette knows that Mr. Kelly resigned at the request of Angie Taylor and the board president, Melina Raymond. Melina Raymond said, quote, "His actions clearly lack integrity and call into question his trustworthiness. He was alleged to have created false media accounts, one of which pointed at me, David Jeffrey." So it's a serious question, and he needs the opportunity to answer that. The WEA withdrew their support and endorsement of him. So those basic ethical issues are on the table, and I think it's a great opportunity for Mr. Kelly to answer. Thank you.
Scott, your response?
Well, my response is, in my opponent, he's talking about accusations for my divorce. And I'm not going to talk about my divorce. It's private. It has nothing to do with school board. And I know from having done a lot of door-to-door the past few weeks and talking to people about school board and my situation, most people don't care. What they care about is what did I do on the school board when I was on, and what are my ideas for the future? He mentioned the WEA taking away the endorsements. You know, look, endorsements, they're not for life. You know, I've been endorsed by the Washoe Education Association in past elections, and I have not been endorsed by them in past elections. But whether they endorse me or not, they love public education. They want to see what's best for public education, as do I. And I would work well with them if I was elected to four more years on the school board. And I think it's important to point out that I have been endorsed by the Washoe Support Professionals Association. You know, those are the bus drivers, the custodians, the maintenance folks. They haven't withdrawn any endorsements. I've been endorsed by the Reno Sparks Association of Realtors, the Associated General Contractors. And so, you know, endorsements are great because they come about if they, if people see that you are doing a good job or if they want you to continue to do a good job. But again, I'm not going to talk about my divorce. I'm focusing on the future. I'm focusing on what I can do for Washoe County School District if I'm reelected or if I'm elected to a third and final term. So that's my response.
Great, thank you, Scott. Do you have a question for Jeff?
Yes, I do. And my question will be about WC1. So back in 2016, Mr. Church, he was, he opposed WC1. In fact, he wrote the opposition to it. Thank God it passed, because if WC1 had not passed and we had not been able to fund, to have funding to build new schools and expand existing schools, our students would have been in double session. And then when COVID-19 hit, we would not have been able to do social distancing, and most of our students would have been forced to do distance learning. We wouldn't have been able to even offer options to families. So my question for Mr. Church is, how could he have opposed something so important to public education back in 2016? And then now, well, two years later, he runs for the school board and loses in a landslide. And now, once again, he's running for school board. How can he square that fact that he opposed something so important, and yet now he wants to be on the school board?
And Jeff, your response?
Great question. WC1 was strictly for building, and they promised us it was for nine years, and then it would sunset. Then, at the very last meeting, it never became a sunset. They put it forever. This is a tax that has raised our sales tax to 8.265, highest in the state, and the result has been a failure. Now, what's happened is that people have fled. We all see the ads. Go to Fernley, buy your car, save on sales tax. One big $100,000 motorhome, that money bought in Carson City, that money goes to the Carson City School District. They predicted it would bring in $87 million a year. We said it wasn't going to happen, and it didn't. It's bringing in about $45 million instead of $87 million, half of that. All that other money is going to Clark County, going to Humboldt County. It's been a failure. And so we're losing money. And you know what else? Reno loses the money. Washoe County loses the money. The flood control folks are 100% dependent on sales tax. They all lose the money. So I was absolutely correct in opposing it because it didn't sunset, and it went strictly for building. And that's exactly what I want to rebut Angie Taylor. We can go to the legislature. That's how you do it. You go to the legislature and you say, I want to lower the WC1 to 7.99. It still gives the school district money and allow the board, whoever gets on that board, give them some power and discretion to use it how they want. salaries for building, for anything they want, rather than being locked into building $252 million high schools. That's outrageous. And it's all covered in my Washoe Schools Examiner. They promised high schools would be $110 million, then $135 million. Now we're up to about $255 million for the new HUG High. Outrageous. I stand by what I say, and I was right.
Thanks, Jeff. Angie, do you have a question for Matthew?
Thank you, Brett. Yes, I do have a question for Matthew. Matthew, it's great to see people, especially parents, that want to get involved in the school district. I think that's really important. That's a voice that's necessary. Now, I will ask this question, and I got disconnected again, so I missed the first two questions. But since I caught the end of it, I think this might be the same, but that's not intended. Should you not, and of course, hopefully, I'm working hard for you to not get the opportunity to serve as a trustee, right? So should you not be given that honor? How will you continue to be involved and take the passion that you have now, that you've shown, and continue to make a difference in the district?
Yeah, which would be an honor. You're absolutely right, 100%. You know, I'm going to continue to coach baseball, but I'm also going to continue to study student intrinsic motivation. And I'm going to continue to care about kids. So any way I can get involved to assist our educators and our kids is going to be something that I will continue to study and something that I'm very passionate about and something I'm very interested in. The psychological process, the cognitive thought mechanism of a child needs to be stretched. We need to allow our children to learn how to think for themselves, not be thought for, if that kind of answers your question.
It does. Thank you. Whatever answer you give is the answer.
Thank you, Matthew. Do you have a question for Angie? Let's close this out.
Yeah, and this is a tough one. You know, it dawned on me. So Angie, you know, I'm actually, I should, I feel like I know you now, so I'm going to rephrase that. Ms. Taylor?
It's Angie or it's Dr. Taylor.
Okay, well, I'll call you Dr. Taylor. Anyway, do you think that voting to increase class sizes in 2017 was a good idea or counterproductive to what you're running on now?
Well, you know, I think this, at the time, it seemed like the best way to get towards what the voters wanted us to do. The voters made it very, very clear that they wanted a balanced budget and not a structural deficit that had been carried over since 2008. I mean, since 2008 is a long time to carry a deficit. And as long as you have a deficit, then you're never going to be able to move forward and put more of that money back into the classroom, back into the teachers' pockets, back into the programs, and so on. I mean, obviously, we don't have a, you know, you don't have a crystal ball and you can't look forward. But at the time, it seemed like, you know what? With all of the options that we have before us, that was the better, that was the lesser of all the evils. Because you always have the largest part of the school district's budget, and you may know this because you've been running for office, is personnel. And you want to do everything you can to not cut positions. So that gave us an opportunity to avoid cutting teacher positions. So given the opportunity, given the choice between do we cut teachers' positions or do we put one more child in some classrooms and maybe two more childs in some of the older children and some of the old child, ha, that doctor is real, right? Or two more children into some of the larger classrooms? We chose that as opposed to eliminating teacher positions.
Thank you.
Can we do a couple, Brett? Just a couple quick questions, like yes, no?
Oh, sure. If everybody's still on board.
Just really fast.
We kept you over your time.
Just yes or no on a couple. Teachers and principals and support staff, the unions had asked for the district for a nine-week delay to the start of the school year. Do you think it was right for the district to open when it did? Just yes or no?
Jeff, let's lead off.
I'm going to be fair to the board. I'm not going to try and second-guess them. They listened to all the witnesses and all the evidence, and they made a tough decision, and I'm not going to second-guess them on this one.
Or what, with what you know now?
Hindsight is 2020, you know, so maybe delayed a couple weeks or something, but I'm not going to second-guess them. And remember, parents can opt out.
Right.
Thank you. Scott?
The answer is yes. I think the school district had great procedures and safety measures in place. It was important to give families the option of either in-person or if they chose distance learning. So my answer is yes.
Great, thank you. Matthew?
You know, I think the win was for the parents that they had a choice to either choose to allow their child to go to school or be at home. I don't think we were quite prepared. We did not think about how to approach training people on how to use distance learning, and we should have been a little less ad hoc with the safety precautions to the teachers.
Angie Taylor?
I'm going to say, when it comes down to COVID, yes. I think the way that we've handled COVID, really those in the buildings have handled COVID from now until then, has demonstrated that that was ready. And I think because so much of our focus, of our emphasis, I should say administratively, we aren't in the classrooms doing that, right, was on COVID and safety, understandably, then more attention and retrospect hindsight, right, could have been spent towards how do we make sure, this is a teacher question, right? How do we make sure the teachers are more prepared for distance learning? So that part is a part that I do second-guess.
Great, thank you. Um, Diane?
My, my thought has not changed. I would have given us a little more time for several reasons. Start out with um, distance learning to better prepare parents, students and teachers. Second reason is to give employers some more time to figure out with their employees that are going to be at home with their students, a little more time to figure out how they can manage their business um, organizations. And, 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 cause the impact was, was of course countywide. And I, I would have given it probably three more weeks.
Okay, uh, Craig?
I support the board's decision, yes. Uh, I think they did a good job discussing it. I think the uh, problems were more implementation problems that, that I've heard from teachers at the school board. And I think that's something you can fix.
Thank you. Uh, Siobhan?
We can wrap, I know everyone's forummed out probably after this day, so we can kind of go to closing statements.
We're used to it, children.
You're shit.
Thank you all so much.
One other fun question I had was just if you had to go substitute a kindergarten class tomorrow and you, you had 20 minutes, what would you do with that kindergarten class?
Um, let's lead off this time with uh, Scott Kelly.
Well, if I had a 20 minutes to teach a kindergarten class, um, I, I think what I would do is I would encourage, I would do some sort of art project. Kindergartners, you know, they're, they're just the cutest little things in the world. And they, uh, they, they're so creative. And so I would love to see what kind of creativity uh, kindergartners could do with uh, with some sort of art project. I think that would be wonderful to do.
Great, thank you. Uh, Jeff Church?
Yeah, that's a really tough question, but I think I'd want to do kind of listening. I'd want each kid to maybe uh, talk about what they wanted to talk about for whatever limited time that they had. And uh, almost like a show and tell, but tell us, tell us about their family, if their parents, their, where they live, what they like, and just give them time to talk.
Great, thank you. Um, Angie?
Hey, I would, um, I would do something with a song. I heard this really cute ABC song and a kindergarten class. And the kindergartners uh, loved it. Um, they got to do their own choreography, which is the uh, the, the creativity part of it, but it kept them engaged and there was some learning involved in it.
So Baby Shark then, right?
No, ABC, not Baby Shark.
Okay, uh, Matthew?
You know, I think I would try to do some role play. You know, uh, probably allow the child to come up with something that they'd like to aspire to. And just allow them to kind of act out, you know, act out what they want to be when they grow up at that point. You know, kids are so creative, but even at a young age, I think you can kind of tap into something and, and let them, if they want to act like they're a doctor or act like they're a, a fireman or, or an artist, I think you just ask the child, hey, and just allow them to, to get up there and perform a little bit and loosen them up. And then, of course, after loosening them up, then we probably have a little bit more serious conversation and talk about their, you know, how important it is to work hard.
Great, thank you. Uh, Craig?
Well, I'm not last, but uh, there's a lot of people before me had very good answers and, and some of the answers I thought about. I, 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 there's a lot of good things in there that I would pick, one of any one would, would be good. But I think the, the most important thing, whatever it is, is to have fun.
Thank you. Uh, Diane?
Well, I'd start out with a really good book, Not Turn Your Ship Around. And then from there, we would uh, we would sing a song that had some movement to it, to get the heebie jeebies out. And then I'd have three different activities. I would have an art activity, I would have some flannel board activity, and I would have some tabletop activities. And it would all be around the story. And we'd continue to talk about um, the concepts of the story.
Great, thank you. Um, how are we feeling?
I'm sure everyone's getting tired. Yeah, I could ask questions.
Oh, we're doing good.
But now let, let everyone kind of wrap up.
Yeah, let's wrap it up. We've kept you guys here for almost 75 minutes and, and I would love to hear some closing statements from uh, from all of you. Uh, you'll have one minute uh, to, to wrap things up. Uh, you know, go over some of your answers and then, and just kind of summarize things. Uh, Matthew, we're gonna lead off with you.
All right, I'll try to make it quick here. So, you know, I, I think we need to focus on the student a little bit more. Motivation for students, finding their intrinsic value to help them propagate into their future. Learning emotional intelligence to reduce depression and abuse. Student future, discovering where their gifts, talents and interests lie and using their competency to direct them to an achievable, achievable future and goal. Character is huge. We need to build this back into our school so we reduce bullying to other students and educators and help the students understand what is expected from a responsible citizen. By current uh, content and merit alone. We need to empower educators to do what they love with latitude, to be compensated fairly. Uh, community unity is huge. We need to build back with trust, our community and district relationship and restore the reputation of the school board. Take a look at my website, it's Matthew, number four, schools.net, that's Matthew, number four, schools.net. You'll find a lot of rumination and content, some verboity. But if you're patient, if you're a patient person and you like long-winded uh, reading, take a look, you probably would be encouraged. Thank you. And thank you to everyone that's here and RGJ. Thank you all.
Great, thank you, Matthew. Uh, Angie Taylor?
Uh, thank you, Brett. Um, I do want to start just by thanking the RGJ uh, for putting this together. And thanks to all of, all the candidates that are on. We spent a, a good day together and we're getting to know each other pretty well. I would say this, um, you know, to, to those who are watching and who will watch, um, it, when this is, uh, when this finally posted and so on. Experience matters. Experience matters, which is why even though the teachers, um, and, and I were on two different sides of an issue when it came down to the reopening of schools, very, very important. WEA, the Teachers Association, still chose to endorse me. Credibility matters. What are, what we've done, what, what you see I'm doing, am I a person of my word? Am I really committed, committed? That matters. When we look at WC1, that we can't spend that money because we gave our word that we would only spend the money for construction and schools, and school buildings. Maybe that could be changed, but as of right now, it's our credibility, it is our word, that matters. Listening matters. I have spoken with Empowering Nevada Teachers and although we're on different sides of issues sometimes, we agree upon this. They say you are known for listening when it comes down to teachers and their concerns. That matters. So I just want to know to say that, you know what you get when you get me, to me back for four more years and we'll continue to build and we'll get there together.
Great, thank you, Angie. Uh, Jeff Church?
Alrighty, thank you. Number one, leadership matters. And that's what I bring to the table, my background, military lieutenant colonel, uh, Air Force Reserve, my Reno PD experience, my teaching experience, my work with the homeless, my Spanish speaking, et cetera. And this is really an easy decision. If you're happy with the failing dysfunctional board, you can look elsewhere. If you want somebody that's the get or done candidate for change, that's me. If you want somebody to cut the loaded administration, that's me. If you want to improve the quality of education from where it is now, again, Mr. Kelly was on there for two, almost two terms before he resigned. And uh, if you're happy with that, okay. If you're not happy with that, I'm your candidate. And then sadly, you know, Mr. Kelly had the chance to deny that he created the false accounts, including David Jeffrey on social media. I'm not divorcing Mr. Kelly, but the name was David Jeffrey and my name is Jeffrey David Church. Jeffrey spelled the same way. I'm disappointed, but I think we all know the answer to the question of did he create it? And that's a serious ethical issue that the voters have a right to determine if they're gonna continue uh, with me, with him back on the board or myself. So I'm the interview candidate, I'm the educating leadership candidate. And I thank you and watchdogjeff.com, that's my nickname, that's what Judge Reed named me many years ago. And uh, I stayed with that, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Scott Kelly?
Oh, thank you, Brett. And again, thanks to the RGJ for doing this. Um, I think for my closing statement, I, I'd like to talk about um, one of the big ideas that I'd like to move forward with if the voters were to vote for me and send me back to the school board. Um, and that is changing the, the bell schedule for Washoe County School District. Uh, now currently, our middle schools and high schools start first. Uh, so we have some students, preteens and teenage students that are starting at seven AM, uh, seven thirty AM or even earlier if they have before school uh, programs or athletics. And you know, these, these poor students, I mean, they're, they're tired, uh, they're, they're drinking coffee, they're drinking energy drinks to try to stay awake, to stay focused. It's bad for their health, it's hurting uh, their academic performance. And uh, even the American Academy of Pediatrics have stated that, you know, preteens and teenagers, they should be starting at eight or even nine AM. Just that extra hour or so, hour or two of sleep would do wonders for them. Um, it would, it would make them uh, better able to focus in class, bring down the caffeine consumption. We would see academic improvements, we would see athletic performance improvements. Uh, so my, my plan is to, you know, start elementary school first and then follow with middle school and finally with high school. Uh, now this would be a big change. I mean, this is something that the school board talked about a little bit this year, earlier this year, and decided just to hold off um, to maybe next year. So this would be a community-wide effort. It would take one or two years to, to fully get through and implement. But I think it's a, it's a good idea because it's good for students. Um, and I think that would really improve things a lot. Um, so again, I, I, I hope people uh, look at uh, my performance on the school board the past three and a half years, that they look at my ideas, they compare that to my opponents. And I really hope to, to earn people's votes and I would love to serve on the school board again for a third and final term. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Scott. Uh, Diane?
I'm gonna frame it in, in a vision, if you will. I'd like us to continue to develop the distance learning framework via uh, community engagement to include students, parents, families, uh, teachers, administrators and the general community to continue on this pathway. Because clearly, um, it has shown us that we can utilize distance learning so that we don't have to keep adding days to the end of the school year. And we can make this happen if we do it in, in a shared uh, database um, decision-making platform. We can make it happen. I'd like us to continue to develop alternative pathways um, for our students. Uh, I believe in college or career-ready. If you are capable of doing college and career-ready, by all means, we will support that. I would like to have personal education plans, I call them PEPs, for every student, beginning the moment they step into the Washoe County School District. It would include, of course, the student at a certain age, but you can even ask a kindergartner, what do you want to be when you grow up? Parents and counselors and teachers. And I believe, I believe in that model.
Great, thank you. Uh, and Craig Wesner, once again, sorry.
That's last.
Late in the alphabet, but.
It's okay, when I was in the air force, I was in D flight and I was Wesner, I was last in E, I was last everywhere, so I'm used to it. Thank you. Brett, thank you for putting this on, uh, thank you to RGJ for putting this on, I appreciate uh, you doing this. It's a great way to help get our message out to uh, the voters. Uh, what I bring to the, to, to our community is organizational leadership skills. And uh, I think that you need to have a, a diverse group of, of skill sets on the, on the board. And uh, that's a skill set that I think i- is needed right now. That's a skill set I bring. I've, I've built great organizations with great cultures. Uh, I like to do that for the school district. Great cultures improve employee engagement, they improve retention and they improve recruitment opportunities. I know I've done it, I've proven that at Loomis and Associates. I ask for everybody's vote, I uh, appreciate everybody's support. And uh, I look forward to a great future with Washington County School District. Thank you.
Great, that wraps it up. Thanks to the uh, school board Brady Bunch here for uh, for chatting with us today. Uh, this is fantastic. Um, and we'd like to encourage all viewers to uh, to make sure that they uh, register to vote and uh, and get out to vote, whether it's early voting, whether it's uh, on election day, uh, in person or uh, via mail. Uh, make your voice be heard. Uh, thank you all. Uh, thanks, uh, thanks to everybody for attending and uh, yeah, we'll, we'll catch you again, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
I'm gonna want you all to go to kindergarten and do your little project.
I'm on it, I'm on it.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'm in.
From all of you, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye, you're probably, have a good night.